At this time, I call to order the meeting of August 26, 2025. Clerk Clark, if you will take the roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Rear.
Here.
Councilmember Rube.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Rochay.
Here.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Here.
Mayor Shoemaker.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we have a presentation for the Hillcrest—am I on? There I am. At this time, we'll have a presentation for the Hillcrest High School Mock Trial Team. Councilmember Hutchings.
Thank you. It is my distinct honor and privilege to welcome Dr. Ashley Cozy and the Hillcrest High School Mock Trial Team, fresh off their win at the prestigious YMCA Youth and Government National Judicial Competition. Under Dr. Cozy's leadership, the team represented Hillcrest High School with exceptional skill and dedication, competing against teams with extensive resources and year-round coaches. Despite facing tough competition, the Hillcrest team rose to the challenge, winning the admiration of all who witnessed their passion and professionalism. Their journey to victory was marked by selfish commitment, and the students raised their own funds to attend the competition, working tirelessly at the library and local coffee shops to perfect their case over the summer. Their hard work paid off, not only in their victory, but in how they became the most beloved team at the event. They earned the respect and admiration of their peers and even gathered an unofficial NJC Crush Instagram account, dedicated to their team's remarkable spirit and generosity. Their success is a testament to their teamwork, perseverance, and belief in themselves, and it's a great honor to have them recognized tonight by Simpsonville City Council. This achievement reflects not only their individual talents, but also the support and strength of Hillcrest High School and the city of Simpsonville. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Cozy to come forward and introduce the team and all the other folks that were involved in this wonderful achievement.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. It's an honor to be here tonight to honor our South Carolina Youth and Government Mock Trial National Champions. Mock Trial is a part of Youth and Government and sponsored by the Greenville YMCA. In November 2024, the Hillcrest High School Mock Trial Team learned they were one of the top three teams out of approximately 50 other teams that competed at Youth and Government, and this was their very first year competing in a mock trial competition. Bella, Jerel, Nick, Nikki, and Ryan came to me in the early part of last year, needing a place to practice and someone to support them in regard to fundraising and taking care of travel details to the National Convention in St. Paul, Minnesota in July. I took these five exceptional kids and provided space for them to meet, all while they took care of the details of practicing tirelessly in the spring and through the summer. And when I say tirelessly, that is an understatement. We raised money by selling world's finest chocolate bars and working at Culvers for an evening profit share. The students also canvassed the city of Simpsonville to raise funds for their trip. The families and friends of each of these students were also very generous with donations, allowing them all to attend the competition. They had one goal in mind, and that was to attend the National Judicial Competition and do their absolute best. We kept in touch over the summer, and following these students revealed exactly how much grit and dedication they have. Meeting almost every day over the summer until they left for the national competition, they worked so hard to earn the ultimate reward, NJC National Champions. It was amazing to finally get the text from the group that they were indeed the champions on July 31. There is no better group of students than these kids that I have had the pleasure of working with and having a small part in helping them achieve their goal. It is my honor to introduce to you the South Carolina Youth and Government National Champions: Bella Collins, Jerel Anthony, Nick Fan, Nikki Wu, and Ryan Hurson. And at this time, Mary Capers-Bledsoe is going to come up and give a little bit more detail about the process and how they got to where they are.
Thank you, Dr. Cozy, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. I'm the Executive Director of the South Carolina YMCA Youth and Government Program. It is a branch of the YMCA of Greenville, but we serve the state of South Carolina. There are about 45 Youth and Government Programs, all YMCA Youth and Government Programs across the country. South Carolina is the third or fifth largest, depending on how you do the math, and is one of the most outstanding. So we're really, really proud of that, both as a state and as Greenville. And of all of the things I have been able to do—and I've been doing this job for a very long time—I'm not sure that I've ever been more proud of what I'm doing right now. And it's likely that I'm going to cry, because I cried and cried and cried when we were in Minnesota. The councilman noted that there were teams from across the country who showed up with coaches—and I mean with professional coaches—with year-round competitions. And the fact that this team did what they did is—it is not remarkable, because I know how hard they worked, right? But it is a testament to will and grit and teamwork and support of each other that I have never seen in my entire career. So when I say I don't think I have ever been more proud of a group of students, I've had the opportunity to see students do remarkable things, and I think this is it. So I'm so delighted to be able to come before you. And I do have to say, the fact that NJC Crush Instagram, NJC Crush, is now in the permanent record in Simpsonville makes me happier than almost anything, because I love stuff like that. And I told him about it. The students didn't know that you were going to mention NJC Crush. It's an off-book Instagram group that sort of pops up at every National Youth and Government Program. There'll be Kona Crush or NJC Crush, and it's run by students. And it's very wholesome, because it's Youth and Government students, right? But they can enter, you know, who's your crush and why? And would you like to state your name? And the fact that, again, at this really, really high-level competition, where mainly they were just all out for blood, at least three different NJC Crush posts said, "South Carolina," and why? Well, because we love them also, I think they're going to win. And then, "Would you like to state your name?" It was like, apparently, the entire NJC. So I'm so proud, I'm so excited that you have invited them forward, and I thank you for letting me ramble, and I didn't cry. So delighted and honored to be here.
And Bella is going to come explain exactly what Mock Trial is, what the process is, and how the organization works.
Good afternoon. My name is Isabella Collins. This summer, we did compete at the National Judicial Competition. And if you didn't know, Mock Trial is an extremely competitive after-school activity. Students write direct examinations, they write cross-examinations, they write opening and closing statements, they memorize the federal rules of evidence. There is a lot of work that goes into it, and I am so incredibly proud of every single student here today and every adult that has supported us along the way. Thank you.
All right, now I'm going to call each of you up to the front. I'm going to start with Nikki. Nikki Wu. El Anthony. T-25 NJC National Champions. Going to get a photo with everyone, if y'all want to come down?
Stand behind her.
No. Are we going to come down?
You stay here.
We're going to come down the platform. All right, continuing with the meeting, we have the approval of the minutes from July 22, 2025. Does anyone see any corrections? Here, no corrections. Minutes stand approved. Citizen comments. We have one person that has signed up for citizen comments, Mr. Folks. Mr. Folks, sorry.
My name is Rod Folk. I live at 18 Cloverfield Drive here in Simpsonville. I'm not affected by the current stormwater problems, and I don't want to be. That's the reason why I'm in favor of spending the proceeds on a stormwater study and stormwater solutions regarding the money that you've got from the sale of the city, Old City Hall. Stormwater problems have been going on for decades, and they're just getting worse. I commend this council for trying to fix the problem, recognizing that it exists and trying to do something about it. I know there's a lot of other problems going on in the city that affect a lot of other people, particularly the downtown congestion, but I think it's simply unacceptable to live in a city where people's homes are routinely flooded when there are solutions to the problems. This is not a Third World country. We're better than that. Simpsonville is simply better than that. It's only going to get worse as more land is altered for development and commerce without understanding the large-scale impact on a regional basis. Water just doesn't know the boundaries of any municipality. It's going to go where it's going to go, and you can't control it. City now has the funding to start to fix the problem, and I'll say just simply do it. Thank you.
All right, on to staff reports. Comprehensive Plan Review, Mr. Derby.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. Mayor with me for a bit. What you have in your meeting packet is the Conference of Plan Five-Year Evaluation. So for the next three hours, I'm going to explain the Conference of Plan in and outs. But no, this is what I've been working on since last year. It is just a requirement that when you adopt a Conference of Plan, you do have to do an evaluation every five years. We did a workshop last year about this time and kind of went over the ins and outs of the Conference of Plan for more of educational purposes. Staff did go through this with the Planning Commission, did meet with department heads. So tonight, I'm going to kind of go over each chapter, just the highlights of what we have achieved from a staff-city level. Start with population. Right now, Simpson Bureau estimated us at 28,078. Part of the Conference of Plan is to participate in programs that keep those numbers accountable, use those numbers for funding reasons. Part of population is to keep up with the demand of growing population and accommodations from amenities. The city has done that with residential care facilities and daycare facilities, with two recent new ones and two under construction. And like on the slide, there's been two nursing home residential care facilities that has been established. So population-wise, we are good as far as the achievements and goals. Economic growth. Staff routinely checks our zoning and code ordinances, as well as our land development regulations, to make sure those are adequate for our goals and strategies for the Conference of Plan. Some of the highlights from that is that we did some updates to our food truck permit process to adapt to COVID restrictions. We did update some of our zoning allowance, especially with alcohol sales for downtown. That kind of helped with—we should see some developments from that, restriction being lifted. Work in progress. Facade grants and tax credits, that's something that we want to take advantage of with our new website, something we haven't done. So that's something that's not technically incomplete, it's just one of those things that we're working on. This is a 10-year plan, a comp plan. So again, where we're at right now is just things we're working on, things that we have Land use section. We've done some of the mixed-use developments in the city, some of those coming before you recently. The Settlement and Cottage Green, those are the big two units that kind of meet all the criteria of what a mixed-use is intended. We also have some ground-up developments in our downtown, something we've wanted to do for so long, that we're now have to look at those regulations, make sure those are adequate to achieve new ground-up construction. Some things I would bring into you, hopefully later this year, you'll see that throughout this evaluation, is our land development regulations is needing a major update. A lot of that will help achieve the goals about walkability, connectivity, cross-access. That's a portion of the work in progress. Housing section. We partnered with G-C-R-A to try to get rid of some blights in the city. We've had three demolitions. On one of those, we actually had redevelopment for a single-family home, so the process that's out there, we've taken advantage of. Working progress. One of the problems we have with the city is we don't own a lot of land that we can really partner with some of these nonprofit organizations to kind of create habitats—or sorry, affordable housing. The last one we did was Habitat for Humanity in the Woodside Mill. That was fortunate, we owned the land there to help partner with that group. Cultural resources. Everyone should be pretty familiar with that. We've done a lot of updates to our Art Center, renovated the inside of that from the gym, the classroom, senior center, and the new fire department admin buildings that we need retrofitted for our new coffee bistro. Those are all cultural resources that we have taken advantage of updating and bringing it to life in some areas. Work in progress for that would be more incentives to advertise more, since we got the new website, something that staff wants to take more advantage of. To Mr. Campbell's credit, he's doing exactly what we should be doing as far as promoting the city, and that's something we want to do on our website, to let residents know that we do have avenues to improve your site, to get tax credits, and that's something that we're kind of lacking in. Public facilities. Again, we've got the new municipal complex. We did look at that as far as the next 30, 50 years from now, growing as a city and having the room to grow. Providing high-quality service from our fire, public works, parks and wrecks, and PD, something that we excel at. To accommodate the need of a growing city, that's something we're going to need to look at as far as the manpower going forward. We did meet with some of the department heads and kind of strategize with them how they see moving forward, where we could grow as facility-wise, and Public Works is one of those on that list that is in need of expanding to kind of accommodate the growing population of the city. Some of the other achievements, we've been upgrading some of our sewer lines, it's a requirement of our strategy of the public facility chapter. We've got new language in the LDR, again, that's coming later this year. Expansion of our Swamp Rabbit Trail, giving connectivity to our downtown, the new fee in lieu of sidewalk, we came to you, I believe, earlier this year. That definitely helps with connectivity. Work in progress, again on your slide, is the continued Swamp Rabbit Trail with Fountain Inn. And a lot of it kind of hinges on Downtown Realignment Project to help kick-start some of that connection. Almost done. Natural Resources. We did implement the new stormwater regulation for a 100-year storm. We did implement some new conservation techniques into the city. One thing that I would like to look for in the future, as far as in the work in progress in the zoning ordinance, is to be more efficient with new technology, charging stations, something that other cities have taken advantage of, that we probably need to implement into our zoning ordinance. And Priority Investment, this chapter is a little different than the other eight. The other eight give a goal and a strategy, how to achieve that. The Priority Investment is more of a guiding document on how to achieve those strategies in 1 through 8. So on your slide, you've got some things we have accomplished in the city as far as development-wise. I think that's about it. This did go to Planning Commission, it started back in October. Staff took three chapters to a public meeting. We met in October of 2024, March 2025, and just recently in August. Planning Commission reviewed this, it was a public meeting. They passed by a resolution that's required by state law and from their recommendation that the Conference of Plan, the efficiencies and the directory of the Conference of Plan is still intact, what we and how we adopted it back in 2020. So this is mainly for informational purposes. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Mr. Pinkerton.
Not a question, but a suggestion, maybe you could add to list of achievements and work in progress is fixing the acoustics in this facility.
Right.
Questions? Mr. Hutchings?
I concur with that. And also, do we have what you just presented in our packet, the evaluation? I don't think so, do we?
Yes.
We do?
Not the presentation.
I don't think it's in there.
Okay, not the slides.
If not, I would like to get a copy of that, because I could not hear a lot of what you were saying.
Do we do it again?
No. No, I'd like to get a copy of it, if you would, after the meeting.
Yes, I will definitely provide that to you, and I'll provide the slides, it kind of shortens it up a little bit, too.
Thank you. Hmm? Fifty. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. Oh, I'm sorry. Last question.
In 24 parts, I'm just kidding. I know Mr. Folks here, and he's mentioned this, and it's something maybe put on the radar to look at. I know it's a—would be a difficult process, but the Extraterritorial Planning Commission, one of the slides in here was partnering with Greenville County itself, and it seems like there's a lot of like-mindedness between the city of Simpsonville and the county right now as it comes to development. And I didn't know if that's something that's been on your radar, or you've looked at, or if you would mind looking at to see if there's any kind of feasibility in something like that, if it would work for the city of Simpsonville, Greenville County, or both.
You can look into that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. Now we'll hear our financial report from our newly hired Finance Director, Maria Thule.
Hold on, I might have to put this down. Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. Here is the July financial report. The year-to-date general fund revenues are $1.9 million, which is 8% of our total budget, and a slightly higher compared to FY '25's July revenue due to the sale of City Hall. Year-to-date general fund expenditures are $2.1 million, which is 8% of our total budget. Year-to-date revenues for the sewer fund are $188,000, which is 8% of the total budget. Year-to-date expenditures for the sewer fund are $70,202, which is 6% of the budget. Special Revenue Fund, year-to-date revenues are $415,172, which is 9% of the budget. And year-to-date expenditures for the Special Revenue Fund are $516,896, which is 21% of the budget. Public Works Enterprise Fund, year-to-date revenues are $9,131, which is 1% of the budget, and year-to-date expenditures are $102,639, which is 7% of the total budget. I'm happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Any questions from Council? Thank you, Ms. Thule.
Thank you.
City Administrator Report, Administrator Coker.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem. You should have a copy of the City Administrator's Report in your packet, but I would like to call out just a few items for everyone's benefit. Regarding Hurricane Helene damage recovery, we have bi-monthly meetings with representative from FEMA and also South Carolina Emergency Management Division. We have a consultant from ICF who's been our Sherpa as we go through this process of reimbursement. We're at the point now where we're anticipating about $2.2 million of reimbursement coming back to the city. Staff attended a workshop at the COG, Appalachian Council of Governments Office, last Friday, August 22, to learn about a new CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. So they called it CDBGDR, for—how about that for acronym? But that's tied in with Hurricane Helene, and there are a range of different eligible projects, from stormwater infrastructure, voluntary buyouts, plans and studies. And so Charlene Carter and Terry Bragg, they attended a second meeting Friday afternoon to meet one-on-one with the state staff. And so we're—at this point, we're still in advance of the application window, so we're working on essentially what our game plan should be as far as how we move forward with our application. Municipal Complex, the screen behind me is on backorder, and we're hoping that it will arrive any day. I also finally received samples of the battan—the felt battan strips that can cover some of these joint lines and screw heads that we have in the acoustic paneling behind us. I'm sure you've all noticed the ADA space out front, that's been—that was all asphalt, it's been saw cut, it's going to be replaced with a concrete pad. And then yesterday, we had a 9,000-gallon fuel oil tank that was buried in the ground behind the old school, which is now the Art Center. We had that drained and removed. And so it's been sort of an adventure to get that rear loading dock taken care of, but we don't think there's any dinosaur fossils or burial grounds or anything else. So we should be on track to getting that moved along. And then one last thing to call out is regarding our streetscape, Phase 1. I was able to meet with CoTransCo and was informed that plans should be finalized by October, and construction bids should be issued in November, December. Again, this is what we've heard from CoTransCo, and at this point, I'm very optimistic that that will be the case. Yes, sir.
Any questions from Council? Mr. Rube.
A few questions, Administrator Craver. The $2.2 million FEMA dollars, to me, I'm not sure if it sounds like a whole lot. I think I was maybe counting on more. By the time—we had staff overtime, we outsourced many contractors, that's just for the cleanup, unless fixing some of the issues. Have we done an inventory of how much staff money and resources that went to just paying contractors, unless damages of that $2 million, how much of it is already gone?
Yes, sir, Councilor Rube. So the city has already received some funds back from FEMA in the neighborhood of $90,000, but the remaining $2.2 million is inclusive of staff time, of all the costs associated with that over time, you know, hauling the brush and debris, and then also in terms of infrastructure repair. And it's mostly culvert strains, that sort of thing, but there was some damage to one of the structures out at Heritage Park, for example. And so the idea is, in many cases, there's a 75% match, federal match, and we're optimistic, and the word is that the state is going to step in and meet the remaining 25. So that $2.2 could even be higher for the city.
Is there going to be left—is there going to be leftover funds to actually do culvert work, or is most of this money is going to go to pay salaries to staff and/or contractors?
Well, these monies are going to go—are going to reimburse work that's already been done.
Okay. When—can you send me a—
I should modify that.
Yeah.
It's to reimburse work that's already been done and projects that are currently underway that are due to the storm, the impact of the storm.
So those monies that we paid, obviously, the contractors that we hired to help, they didn't say, "Pay us next year when you get your FEMA money." Those were monies that were paid through by the Those were monies that were paid through by the city upfront, correct, that we got reimbursement on some, but not all?
I wasn't here last year, but to the best of my understanding, that's the case.
Okay. I would like to see a rundown, if you get a second. I know you've got a lot on your plate, but I would like to see how much of this money is already used, how much we might have left over to fix maybe some other areas that were damaged by the storm. Second question, since you did work with the county for so long, maybe you can speak to this. I had a long meeting with Councilor Gary Collins this week, and he said that the county has upwards of $19 million set aside for storm damage, flood damage, things that we're dealing with here as a city. Not that it's not going on everywhere, but what was shocking to me, and what I'm trying to find out an answer, and maybe you don't have one, maybe we need a resolution to figure out how to do this, but municipalities are not granted this money. If we were to live on the other side of the street, county money can go to that, but if you're inside the city, we're not allocated any of that. And I'm wondering what that is. People here in the city pay county taxes just like everybody else. Why cities are not, and you don't have to give me an answer today, but this is something that I really want to investigate to see why that is and what we need to do to change maybe that. Gary's also trying to figure that out, nor does he agree with that rule. It just seemed like it's always something the county did, and don't ask questions. But now that there's a new county council involved, I'm wondering if petitioning something to change so cities like ourselves that are dealing with major stormwater can get some of that county money. We've tried with the state, I know you haven't been here the last two years, we've tried with the state the last two years, and it was allocated to Malden. And I don't mind being on record, that $10 million went to Malden to pay for a soccer stadium, while we are paying for state roads in the city with city tax money. There's something really wrong with that picture. So to say, well, we'll rely on state money, we've been saying that for a couple of years. Now there's county money, we're not able to get that either. So I just, there's just some things that I'd like to see. You worked with the county, maybe you can figure out why that is, and maybe what we can do to allow our citizens to get some of that county money. You don't have to answer me tonight, nor do I expect you to have an answer. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Mr. Hutchings?
Regarding the downtown, oh, sorry, regarding the downtown revitalization and streetscape, I think you and I both have asked for, took CoTransCo for a detailed summary from our workshop meeting. We have a lot of constituents asking where we are on that, and it's very difficult for us to tell them because we really don't know exactly where we are since that meeting occurred. So I would greatly appreciate if we could get a detailed report on where we are and what timelines we're working toward.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the city administrator? Okay, moving on to business. Item A, O-2025-08, Short Term Rental Ordinance, Staff Report and Code Ordinance, Mr. Derby.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It's okay, stay over here, I think the audio might be better than out there. What we have tonight is the first of the two items. This is the ordinance section, O-2025-08. This is established short-term rentals in our code of ordinances. This item came forward, council had to last meet the whole, and it was recommended to go to Planning Commission. This did go to August 5th, Planning Commission. This was presented to them as a whole, code of ordinance and the text amendment, which is the zoning ordinance. In your packet, the code of ordinance has some red text, those are the recommendations that Planning Commission made that night. The strike-throughs are the ones they recommended to be taken out, just for example, definitions for clarity purposes, to be consistent with the other portion of the ordinance. They designated to be 21 years of age as an adult. Short-term rental was defined as 30 days instead of the previous six months. The Section 295-10D is part of the exemplar agreement. That was struck through, that could have defined the 2015 code. We put language in there to adopt the permissive code of ordinance that details that overcrowding. The grace period was updated to 100, or requested at 120 days instead of a timeline designated after the ordinance being passed. The short-term agent distance requirement was recommended at 15-mile radius. There was one person that spoke at the meeting, they presented an email to staff, and that was provided on your desk this evening, that was some suggestions that they had, because they are a, they do have a couple of short-term rentals, so they did provide some comments during the meeting and in that email. Planning Commission recommended an approval of those recommendations as a whole. I might have to consult with Mr. Hughes to make sure this is correct, that they did make recommendations for both of them under the TX ordinance. So tonight you will have two ordinance, the code of ordinance, and then the text amendments section, which I'll refer to after this, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Council, do we have a motion? Mr. Pinkerton?
I was actually going to ask a question, but I'll get a motion. I move to approve 0-2025-08, Short Term Rental Ordinance.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Pinkerton and a second from Councilmember Root. Discussion? Councilmember Pinkerton.
A couple of questions, just for procedural. If this moves forward tonight, will it go then to the next two business meetings for approval? Or is this it? It does go to?
That's correct.
And could you repeat what you just said about this? Did you say that you were going to accept these? I didn't quite understand what you were saying.
The public comment portion of the Planning Commission, there was one person that spoke, they do have short-term rentals, she was going to provide me some comments in writing what she spoke about at the meeting in addition, and that on your desk is what was emailed to me yesterday.
Are you saying we add those as?
For consideration.
Oh, for consideration, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember O'Rear.
All right, yeah, kind of cross-reference these with questions I asked to see what, so from the second whereas, it still says six months. I'm guessing that's an oversight at this point. Says of less than six months.
That's correct.
All right, that's why. Section 10-295A4, can this be, can that be recorded electronically? Is that going to be a possibility for someone to do that electronically?
Correct. Staff has already spoke with our online portal company, and they have the ability to create anything we need that can allow them to either check a box, digital signature, and upload anything that we have that's in this ordinance.
Okay. Section 10-295A8, that was one of my questions from the first time, having to find an association president to authorize and say that short-term rentals were permitted. I think that's a little overburdenous, considering all these covenants and bylaws are recorded in the county, and I think they could easily go look that up and ascertain for themselves whether they're legal or not, because finding a HOA president could be hard, and then getting them to talk to you could be even harder, and then getting them to sign it could be even harder, when that's all there in the county record. So I don't, I don't think, I don't know why we would need to have that there. And then 10-297E, and we talked about this a little bit off the record over here, is the one agent. The one thing I see with that is when you're the owner and you have one agent, if your agent becomes incapacitated and you're out of town, then you don't have an agent anymore. I would think that if, as long as, I think according to this, as long as the agents are known to the city, then I don't know why we would need to limit it to just one, because I just see some problems arising from that. And I think that's all I have for this piece of it.
Any other comments? I have one. Councilmember O'Rear just said about the agents' proximity and presence, I'm wondering why in 10-297A, we would need an agent to reside within a 15-mile radius. It could be a property management group, it could be that somebody's always on duty, maybe not necessarily within 15 miles, but I just think that's just too restrictive. There are a lot of people that buy investment properties inside the city and run them through a property management agency. The agency doesn't live within 15 miles, and neither does the owner. So I'm thinking the distance, do we need to establish a distance?
I think you should. One way that kind of eliminates people from out-of-town purchasing properties that have no.
I can't hear you.
It limits someone from way out-of-town purchasing properties and never sets foot in here, has no vested interest besides revenue from that short-term rental. That kind of restricts that and keeps it, the person, their vested interest within a short distance. I mean, a lot of the stuff that I looked in these ordinance we have, I looked up at other municipalities, and these are pretty consistent. The numbers change, some were two-hours distance, some were 30, and some didn't have it. So it's really a plethora, but a set distance of 10, 15 was pretty common that I saw in those.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes?
I have a further response to your question. Speaking from past experience, I can, there, I think the primary reason you have a distance requirement for an agent is that if our codes enforcement officer has to serve someone with a code violation, they have to actually personally deliver a summons to that person. And a lot of times, you will get an out-of-state investment buyer who we can't easily serve. And so if you have this agent who lives locally, not necessarily within the city limits, but locally, we can find, we can serve that person with the code violation, and that service be effective upon them. So that's one reason to have a distance minimum requirement.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, on ordinance 2025-08, Short Term Rental Ordinance, Staff Report and Code Ordinance, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
None? The motion passes, seven, the seven vote, seven, six, sorry, six. All right, moving on to item B, TX 2025-02, Miscellaneous Refinements to the Zoning Ordinance, Text Ordinance, again, Mr. Derby.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is the section dealing with the zoning ordinance regulating short-term rentals. Again, this did go to the August 5th Planning Commission meeting. More red type and strike-throughs on this one. They did clarify, I think at the request of one of the council members, that attached single-family was removed, it was just apartments. We actually added in apartment complex because that term kind of gets a little bit of gray when someone has a duplex, it's considered an apartment. So by having a complex in there, we're kind of really targeting actual garden districts, full-blown commercial apartments. They did make a recommendation for the occupancy, two per bedroom plus two per dwelling. They did have a lengthy discussion about number four, large gatherings. They really didn't understand why that was in there. We did discuss that it's kind of hard to regulate that, even if you don't have a short-term rental. We do have ordinances that will establish nuisances of noise, overcrowding of parking, the fire department and police department can enforce, things that would arise from having a large gathering. Number eight was dealing with the registry, that was something that everyone agreed upon, but they did have some concerns and the way it was written, they suggested that it just be the agent. So if you were to rent a property, you and your family, it'd only be your name, not the whole family. That would be listed on the registry. And again, the 30-days request, striking through the six months for defined term of a short-term rental. Again, this was recommended approval from Planning Commission with those red types and strike-throughs. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Let's go over here first.
Mayor, Pro Tem, and council, I'd like to make a motion to pass to the next business meeting, item TX-2025-02, Miscellaneous Refinements to the Zoning Ordinance, Text Ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember O'Rear, I have a second from Councilmember Hutchings. Discussion? Go ahead. Ms. O'Rear.
First, I want to thank the Planning Commission, all the work they did on this, because I went to the meeting, the last one they had, and they put a lot of effort into it, a lot of good questions, and a lot of things were adopted. Couple of questions really on this one. In Section 3.244A1, just a question, maybe probably for Daniel, would this eliminate subletting the room of someone's home? 3.4, 2.244A1?
A2.
A1.
All right, well, so this deals only with a short-term rental. Which is less than 30 days, so it would not preclude a lease agreement with your typical sublease.
Thank you, that's what I thought, I just wanted to get clarification. And back to something I've said on the last meeting, I don't understand, and maybe people have explanations. 3.244A5, asphalt or concrete requirement for the driveway, I just, I mean, I just don't understand why it needs to be that way. I know aesthetics and things like that, but I could probably count a bunch of examples of how this isn't out there right now like that, and just don't want to hamstring someone from being able to take advantage of a short-term rental because they might have crushed asphalt or things like that for a driveway. So I'd love to hear a discussion on that, to see what the other thoughts are. That's it for me, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Hutchings.
I just want to say that I agree with the staff comments, that this can be a great economic tool for the city. My experience has been that short-term rental properties are usually highly remodeled and refined for that use, so that does improve the overall economic, I think, quality of Simpsonville.
Okay, hearing no more discussion, let's take the vote on TX 2025-02, Miscellaneous Refinements to the Zoning Ordinance. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Zero opposed. Motion passes with six votes. Item C, Proposed Ordinance to Appropriate Proceeds from the Sale of Old City Hall to Establish a Fund, to Establish and Fund a Stormwater Initiative Fund. Councilmember Pinkerton.
Yeah, council, as you're aware, we're in having hand funds from the sale of City Hall in about $837,000. And council can appropriate those funds as we wish, and vote for. So I'm going to suggest that we appropriate those funds to a stormwater initiative fund for the purpose of targeting stormwater problems throughout the city and enhancing our ability to respond to any infrastructure needs that we have. I think everybody in here would agree that not only is it a city problem, it's a county problem and a state problem with stormwater, and here we have a unique ability to take some funds. And here we have a unique ability to take some funds, maybe not quite enough that we really need, but some funds that we can use to directly target some of the problems we have. Included in those, we could use them for matching funds that we may need for FEMA funding that the city may get. Funds for a stormwater study, something that we've discussed in the past, if we wanted to allocate some of those funds for stormwater study. Although I will say, I think we generally know where our problems are and we've already had a couple of studies done because of the hurricane and for other issues. And then repair existing stormwater issues on and off the city right-ofways. I think this is, for me, and I hope you agree, that this is a step forward to establishing some dollars that would be used just for that at the approval of city council. So counsel, I move to appropriate the funds from the sale of City Hall to establish and fund a stormwater initiative fund.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Pinkerton and a second from Councilmember Rup. Discussion. Mr. Rup.
Yeah, I agree with council members. In fact, he beat me to it. I've been talking offline for a few months with the mayor and some others about using these funds for this purpose. I have spoken to council, previous council members that were on this council back in the early 2000s that said they were dealing with some of these issues then. You can see how much the city's landscape has changed in 20 years. But it's just gotten worse for some of these people. And we have just kicked the can down the road and keep waiting for the next council to deal with it and then that council doesn't want to deal with it. I, I was actually told when I joined this council, don't bring this matter up. It's a no-win. And I felt a little, um, I didn't really like that comment. I don't think us not talking about issues because we don't think we can miraculously fix them isn't a solution either. So I, I, I know we're doing cityscapes. We're spending money on roads and I'll echo again what I said earlier, on state roads that city funds should not be going to, but they have to because we're waiting for state funds to pay them. And perhaps maybe we'll get some of that back and we'll be able to pay, get some of those state funds back. But in the meantime, it doesn't fix our water problem. Now, to echo the council members' statement about $840,000 doesn't go a long way to fix water. We fixed a culvert, I think it was three years ago. Just the one culvert was a half-million-dollar expense. It's very expensive to fix these things. But even if it fixes two culverts in a really bad area, along with some FEMA money, just fixing a few culverts can go a long way if it's done correctly. And it can solve a lot of problems with a lot of people in one fix. So we've had people come and speak to this council that have showed us pictures where there is water over their six-foot privacy fence. It's, it's, it's hard to believe until you see the pictures, but that's the kind of devastation that some of these people are living every time it having rains here or rains a series of days. Some of us don't feel it. The side of town I'm on, we don't see it. Retention ponds have come along and guidelines. We've passed 100-year flood for new, new developments moving forward, but the older subdivisions that don't have those things have become somebody else's problem of a newer subdivision and their water just runs off. So I said all this to say that because I'm passionate about spending this, these dollars there. I think we could all probably go around and say where it should be spent and they're probably all good ideas because we, you know, we got streets and other things to do. I don't think anyone, anyone up here wants to waste the money. I would like to see council pass this, even if it fixes two culverts, if we can match it with some FEMA funds, if we can find out how to squeeze some county money, if we can get paid back from the state to help pay for some of the roads that we're flipping the money up front. We've, I, I will say, and I will, I will guard against this as far as my thinking is paying for a water study, which is at $100,000. Water studies take two to three years to come back. A lot changes in two to three years. If you've seen just by our numbers here in the city, they've grown, I think, was it four or 5,000 people in the last few years? And then you get what happened to Malden. They do a, they do a water study, they spend $100,000, they wait three years and they go, oops, this is a $10 million fix and we don't have the funds. So now we got to tell our citizens that we can't fix it. So I think we get ourselves in big trouble paying for water studies. I think you can do smaller engineer studies like we've done on North Almond, South Almond, which, which, um, I'm still waiting to see the dollars on those by the engineer that did it. But those are the things that we need to do. Let's tackle the bigger problems first. Let's, let's meet those people's needs that need it the most. And I think this is a good start. I don't think it fixes their problem. I think it's a good starting point. So I, I, council member read my mind because I was going to, I've been suggesting for a while we spend these dollars in this manner. So I appreciate him putting this on the agenda. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Rear?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Pinkerton, it's a great idea. I think, I think you said something pretty key about, you know, kind of piggyback on what Councilmember Rup said. We kind of know where the problems are. We don't need to spend 100 grand, wait a couple of years when we can fix some things ourselves. I don't think there's anyone on this council right now that's not willing to, to make decisions like Councilmember Rup alluded to in previous councils. You know, you, you want to be a part of the solution to a problem. And I think beyond traffic, the single second, the second largest problem, stormwater and the mind of the public for sure. And I've talked to, to Councilmember Pinkerton about this in the past. I think a lot of this and Councilmember Rup said, even if it's one or two culverts, it's, it could be a solution for thousands of people at one time depending on where they are. And you have to start somewhere. Sticking your head in the sand does not solve problems. Very rarely do they stay status quo. They usually get worse and that's what's happened and we're adding people. So I think this is a great start because this council, I think, truly does need to show the public that we are willing to make decisions on very, very hard topics like this that do cost money, but no one really expects things to, no one's waving magic wands and everything's getting fixed tomorrow. But you fix the one or two problems tomorrow, maybe a large problem. I know Westwood where Councilmember Williams lives, it, it has issues, it's older. Point Setia has issues, it's older. You knock off a project or two with what you have now as you seek matching funds as we go along, will go a long way toward impact on not only real impact, but psychological impact on the city because, you know, we do need to take action on this particular issue. You know, I wish we had a little more leeway on the traffic part, but junk of that's out of our hands. But this is something we can do something about and I encourage us to, to move forward with this and use this money to start handling a problem that we all have. Thanks for bringing it to the agenda.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hutchings.
I think this is an excellent idea and a great use of these funds. We, as Councilmember O'Rear mentioned, we have Westwood and Point Setia, two of our major large subdivisions in Simpsonville are perpetually flooded every time we have a major rainstorm. The water, I think water, stormwater runoff issues are one of, probably one of the top, top-of-mind issues with all of our constituents. So this will give us a start. It's not, it's not going to be a, a cure-all in the beginning, but at least it'll give us a start in that direction and give us all a purpose to work towards. So I'm very much encouraged by this.
Any other comments? Councilmember Williams.
I agree with everybody else up here and in favor of using this money towards stormwater. Like everybody else said, we, a lot of us live in areas that have, are dealing with stormwater and the whole city's dealing with stormwater and whatever money we can get together to solve some of these problems now, I'll be in favor of getting that started too.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, my turn. Addressing some of the things that were said about past councils, I just want to make it clear that, and I know what Mr. Rup is talking about where, you know, it was hands-off on stormwater. And the reason that the past councils have been told that is because if you address one area of issue, you're obligated to address all of them with city taxpayer dollars. If you buy out property A, the people at property B are going to go, why aren't you buying me out? That's a great solution for me too. Pretty soon we're spending taxpayer dollars buying out all kinds of properties that have flooded yards. So that's the reason it's been kind of a hands-off kind of an issue. I've never agreed with that, but I've also been keenly aware of our inability to solve it quickly and our financial, you know, limitations. As far as the stormwater study goes, that's necessary and I hate it that it takes so long. But if you fix a problem upstream, you just created a problem upstream. If you fix a problem on East Curtis, we're going to have more of a problem in the neighborhoods behind it. And that's the reason the stormwater fund, our stormwater study is so important because somebody that's smarter than everybody up here, except Mr. Pinkerton, he actually has experience in this, they, they, they know what to look for and how it will affect things downstream and the overall picture. They can take the history of our problems, they can see where things are going in the future, and they can make sure that we don't waste your taxpayer dollars by addressing problem A only to create problem B that we didn't have before. So I'm, I'm all for putting this money and any other that we can find into solving this issue. I think our citizens deserve a, a real solution, a fair solution for everyone and a wise use of taxpayer funds.
Having no other comments?
Just one more.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Let me real quick, because I think we all know that we also appropriated $250,000 in our budget the last two years. We didn't spend the previous 250, it went back in the general fund. So approving this, technically we have that plus the 250 if we act on it and use those funds accordingly, more like a million dollars, so.
All right. Having no other comments, we'll take the vote on Proposed Ordinance to Appropriate Proceeds from the Sale of Old City Hall to Establish and Fund a Stormwater Initiative Fund. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries with six votes. We're now going to move into an executive session to discuss employee compensation. Upon coming out of executive session, council may reconvene the meeting to act on matters discussed inside executive session. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Williams?
So make a motion, ooh, I make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss employee compensation as allowed by SC Code 30-4-70A1.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Williams, seconded by Councilmember Rup. All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries with six votes. We will now enter into executive session to discuss employee compensation. Upon coming out of executive session, council may reconvene the meeting to act on matters discussed in executive session. We are now in executive session. Calling the meeting back to order for August 26, 2025, as we come out of executive session, meeting's called to order. Do I have a motion? Mr. Pinkerton.
I move to authorize city administrators to engage in services of an employment attorney for legal matters pertaining to employee compensation and shift departmental budgets, provided the overall budget appropriations do not change.
Second from anyone?
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Pinkerton, a second from Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes with six votes. If no one is in objection, we will adjourn this meeting.